We'll get started in about one minute.
The January 12th, 2014 meeting of the City of Danville Planning Commission is now called to order. I want to welcome everybody here today to the meeting. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Danville City Council and is comprised of members who serve on a voluntary basis. Today is a special work session that we'll together to discuss the development options for a proposed project on Stewart Street. And we'll be opening up the public hearing portion to allow different ones to come up and speak if you would like to. And at this time, we're going to call the roll, please.
Mr. Scares?
Present.
Mr. Doxson? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Bolton?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda is to do the election of the officers for this next year, so I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. We have three officers to elect tonight, since it's our first meeting of the year. That is chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. So what I'm going to do, first of all, is I'm going to open the floor for nominations for chairman. And please remember, it does not require a second for a nomination. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Scares, again, for chairman of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Scares has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and ask you each to vote aye as the role is called, if you wish to have Mr. Scares as your chairman for 2015.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Scares?
Aye.
All right. I will now open up the nomination, the floor for nominations for vice chairman. Again, it does not require a second. So are there any nominations for vice chairman of the Planning Commission?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and again ask that you vote aye for Mr. Wilson as your vice chairman for 2015, as the role is called.
Mr. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Scares?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And lastly, I will open the floor for nominations for secretary with all the previous rules stated. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Evans, secretary.
Mrs. Evans has been nominated for secretary. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I close the nominations and we'll call the roll one more time.
Mr. Scares?
Aye.
Mr. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Abstain.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And congratulations, Mr. Scares, Mr. Wilson, and Mrs. Evans. And so now I'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Again, the first item on the agenda, main item, is to discuss development options for a proposed project on Stewart Street. There will not be a vote tonight. It's just strictly a work session to get input from citizens and the developer ideas, suggestions. This will be on our next Planning Commission meeting, February 8th. Is that correct?
If, the 9th.
The 9th, I'm sorry, the 9th. Yeah, okay. All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if those interested in speaking would come up one at a time. State your name for the record.
You're all probably familiar with this project from our previous meeting. This is a little more formal than I was anticipating. I was thinking that a work session would probably be more people milling about and making comments, and we could have a discussion as opposed to people getting up and making speeches. But however you feel comfortable doing it, I mean, we're willing to go with that. You know, when we were here before, we received approval from the Planning Commission. And so I don't really know what we're attempting to accomplish tonight. You know, there were some negative comments made about the project that I think that council had some concerns about, and there are a couple of council members here. And so in this less formal setting that we have here, I mean, if it's agreeable, I think that if people want to make comments as I speak, I think that that would suit me best, probably. This is a topo map of Stewart Street. And so what I, one of the points that I want to bring up, that I think maybe there was some lack of information about, or some misinformation out.
Excuse me, Gus, if you could, somehow you've got to stay near that mic.
Okay. Is that the reason things are where they are in the plan that we submitted prior. There are a lot of issues that you have to deal with on this property. But one of the primary ones is the topography of the street as you get down the street. And so why were the apartments located where the apartments were located? Why were the single-family houses located where the single-family houses were? Why were the townhouses located where they were? And so what I would like to point out, as you can see, this is Stewart Street coming down here. This would be West Main Street here, and then this would be Watson Street down here. And this map, it's not quite as detailed, probably, as it could be. But if you're familiar with Stewart Street, you know that the area that, as you, as you go down Stewart Street, from West Main Street, that's directly on the right, that that is a larger area that's relatively flat. And because the apartment buildings are large, they require a level area. Whereas, and that land is also very deep. Whereas across the street, where some people had mentioned, you know, if you put the apartments on the other side of the street and they didn't have any houses behind them, that property is rarely more than 100 feet deep. And so it's not deep enough to accommodate apartment buildings. And so then also, as you go down Stewart Street, the topography is a little more undulating. And so that would make it very difficult to put apartment buildings down there because they'd require a lot of grading, a lot of site work. And not only is that makes it more expensive, which I'm sure you all don't care about, but it also increases the amount of noise. It's more disruptive to the environment. And so if you can keep the lay of the land basically as it is, that would be favorable on a lot of different levels. And so that's why, that's why we have the things where they are. It's not just willy-nilly. It's not just, we'll just move the apartments here, move the houses here, move the townhouses here. It's there for a reason, and it's fairly well thought out. And so I do want to clarify that, because I think that there had been some suggestions that the apartments be moved, or so forth. And that's the reason. The other issue that I think that there's a great deal of concern about is the cul-de-sac. Mr. Walden has gone down here and purchased, I don't know what I mean, 28, 28 to 30 properties. At a certain point, the word got out, that hey, you know, this guy with a lot of money is coming down here and he's buying up all these houses. And so some of the folks at the lower end of the street decided that their $30,000 properties were worth $130,000. And so it was not economically feasible for Mr. Walden to go down there and purchase the entire street. Because of that, the remaining properties at the lower end of Stewart Street are not of a standard that, if you're building upper-end housing, that you would want to be associated with. And so I feel that it would be a great negative to this project and probably a deal killer, if in fact, you had to keep the street open all the way through. And so that's why the issue of the cul-de-sac was brought up, and why the decision was made to make a cul-de-sac on the street. You know, it's much better for the project overall, because it reduces the traffic flow. You don't have through traffic. Most people would rather live on the cul-de-sac. And so that increases the desirability of the project, and therefore the value of the project. And so those are the two main issues that I think that we've had some issues with. You know, I came before this board 12 years ago, 13 years ago, and before city council with a project. And I heard pretty much the same arguments that Mr. Walden has been hearing about his project. You know, it's the four things. You're going to increase traffic, you're going to increase trash, you're going to increase noise, and you're going to increase crime. That for some reason, people have associated attached residential, multifamily with those four factors. And so I just, I have invited people to go by and check out the project that I'm working on, because they will see that none of those four factors come into play at all. If it anything, that project, and I feel like this project will, has actually improved the neighborhood. And I would much rather have nice, high-end, even if it's rental or multifamily housing in my backyard than a derelict vacant street. I think the street as it is now is something that invites crime, invites traffic, invites, invites noise, and invites trash. So those are the main issues I like to make. And, you know, it's just basically a reiteration, perhaps better articulated, of the same argument that we made when we were before.
Okay. I will, of course, let other people come up and speak, and you may come up afterwards if you want to answer some questions. But would you address one issue about, I know there's been one issue, and of course, we're here really to make a zoning decision.
Right.
But the drainage and the stormwater issue is something that people have talked about.
Right.
And I know the stormwater issues are now more stringent.
They're much more stringent if you've been down Stewart Street, which I hope everybody has by this point. I mean, I think you're making a decision about Stewart Street and you actually haven't gone in and looked at it. But Stewart Street has no curb and gutter. It is, it is a paved street that when it rains, the water runs wherever it wants to run. And unfortunately, it tends to run in some people's basements. And so by having curb and gutter on the street, and then having these large retention areas, that captures the water, and it actually, I would imagine that this would improve the drainage situation greatly for the surrounding property owners.
Right.
You know, the new, and I know you're familiar with them, because I was there at the meeting that you were at, about the new stormwater management regulations are really quite strict. And so I would say that if that's a concern for somebody, then they ought to be happy to see this project go forward, because it would actually improve the situation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions that you all may have at this point? If not, we can.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're addressing, you were talking about the original plan and putting the apartments at the top.
Right.
So am I to understand that the second set of plans in the packet, you're not considering anymore?
That is an option. Like I say, it is a, to my mind, it is a much less desirable option. But we want to make sure that all the options are on the table. We would much rather offer a less desirable option and see the project go through than to not offer that and not have the project go through. To me, the only issue you're resolving by relocating the apartments is that you're putting them behind somebody else's house. And to me, that's unfair. I mean, I think if, I think if, it should be made on decisions other than whose house they're behind. You know, we've heard that people say, well, they don't want to, they don't want to have to look at their back window and see these ugly buildings. You know, I take a great deal of offense of that, because I don't think they're going to be ugly buildings. I think they're going to be very attractive. And so I wouldn't mind having these in my backyard. I wouldn't have, wouldn't mind having them across the street from me. And so the issue of where the, like I say, to me, it ought to be a logical decision of where the apartments go to, and not a political or an emotional decision. But that is an option.
Are there other options, such as moving the apartments into the cul-de-sac and having them face West Main? You've got a big piece of property.
Right. If, the cul-de-sac, I mean, if you've been down, you know where I'm talking about. The cul-de-sac basically would go where the road makes a dog leg. It's not only a dog leg. This way, it also goes down where a steep one. I would say the logistics of trying to get the apartments in that area would be very difficult. And like I say, it would involve a lot of site work. And you don't really gain anything. Because the other issue is, that there is a possibility, at some point, this street can be reopened. And if you've got a big apartment building right in the middle of where the road right away should go, then that, that makes that more difficult as well.
Got a question for you, too. In considering the first plan versus the second plan, it was my understanding, I believe, that the first plan better uses the stormwater management plan that you've got in place, and the second one is more restrictive. It may not be as well?
Right. Because, because the, in the second plan, the apartments are in the lower area. If you'll, if you'll notice on your, on your site plan, the apartments, because of the buildings and the parking lot, occupies a greater percentage of the area of the lot. And so it would be much better to have the area that you're going to use the open area for the stormwater management basin to be on the lower, because, you know, as we know, water runs downhill.
Water flows downhill, yeah. Okay.
Can I ask a question along those lines? And this may be to staff. However, does the second plan meet the stormwater management criteria? I mean, it might be less, but does it still meet what we?
Those are all.
Is it still viable?
Yeah, those are all calculations that are yet to be determined. You know, there's a lot of expense involved in calculating these things. And so you sort of, you sort of take an eyeball view of it and see what looks like it's going to be the best option. And generally, those are your best options. I can't speak to whether it would even be practical to move the apartments.
So we don't really have an assessment of that for the original plan, either?
Well, because of the fact that the large open area, we have a rather large open area behind the townhouses, that is at the lower extreme of this property, that that, I mean, that's the best place for the stormwater management to be taken care of. And so we're confident that it can be taken care of at that point.
Do we, can we ask a question of these guys?
Sure.
Since we're on the topic, do you all see a difference in that between Plan One and Plan Two?
Plan One is, you see from the topo map, the water's flowing basically southwest, south-southwest on this. With Plan One, you do have the open area. Plan Two, by moving the apartments down to the western portion of that cul-de-sac, that is where the natural flow of water is going to be. The water wants to head in that direction just because of gravity. Could you still make the water go that way, or engineer it to go somewhere else? Yes. I don't know the answer to it, as he said, because those numbers haven't been run. You can always put in underground tanks and other things to control the water, but that gets very expensive. Then does it become cost-effective to do it that way? I don't know. You have to account for water quantity as well as water quality. It's not just controlling the water that's there. You now have to also hold it, let any dirt or anything else filter out of it. The temperature has to drop before it can be released. So the necessity for stormwater management has increased a lot. If anyone's seen the new gas station that was built kind of up by Walmart, that Murphy Express, with that little pond out in front of it, you're going to see more of those because of these new regulations. Plan B, there's not really a lot of space to put that kind of thing in, in that location where gravity wants to pull the water, too. So it's hard to say that that's going to work based on the way the topo is. Now, if you're going to move a lot of dirt, maybe. I just don't know, and I'm not that far along with either of these plans to say yes or no.
Any other questions for Mr. Dyer?
I do. Could, would you address why the parking is in the front of the apartments rather than in the back?
It's got to go somewhere.
Why not in the back?
Well, because then the parking would be adjacent to the adjacent property owners. By having it in the front, it's just basically, you know, in the street. And so for whatever issues people have with parking lots, that would be less onerous to the neighbors.
Have you asked the neighbors that?
No, we have not. We've made that assumption. I'm sorry.
That's why we're here tonight, these kind of things?
Actually, the original plan that I submitted to L and D had apartment buildings on either side and the parking in the middle. This plan, believe it or not, requires two and a half parking spots per unit, which when you build a single-family house, you'll have to have two. But anyway, these apartments. And so it's a lot of parking. There is the strong possibility, if you all would consider reducing the number of parking spaces required, that we could put the parking spots in the middle. They are going to have to meet, the parking lot does have to meet the landscaping requirements that I know is having that you're familiar with, because we deal with a lot of that. You know, as far as trees, every, I think, every 15 spaces and things like that. So it's not just going to be an open expanse of asphalt. It will be landscaped, as attractive, if not more so than the code requires. You know, these are going to be high-end apartments, and you want the site to be attractive. And so in situations like that, you usually go above and beyond what the regulations are as far as landscaping.
And how many stories will the apartment?
Three stories. And again, that's based on the number of units that we need to have. It's based on the fact that we desire an elevator. And economically, to provide an elevator, three stories is your sweet spot. You know, it costs more per unit if you've only got a two-story building to provide an elevator, and it costs more per unit if you're four stories, because you have to have a different type of elevator. And so three sto, that's why you see a lot of three-story buildings that have elevators, because that's, there's an elevator that's designed for three stories, and that's sort of the sweet spot as far as elevation. I would point out that, you know, a lot of the older houses in Danville, I mean, they have 14 or 12-foot ceilings and things like that. The actual height of this building is probably not going to be higher than an average two-and-a-half-story house counting the roof. Also, that this land is significantly lower than the houses on West Main Street, so it certainly would not stick above the houses on West Main Street. As a matter of fact, I believe you probably would drive by there and not even be able to see them, unless you're driving down Stewart Street.
Mr. Jones? Something has to be done here. But at capacity, how many cars are you talking about in this area, on the average?
You're talking about the entire project?
Yes.
All right, well, there are 42 units in the project. And as I said, the apartments are going to require two and a half spots per, per unit.
Not everybody's going to have two and a half cars.
Right, right. You have guest parking and things like that. The houses themselves only have to have two spaces. And so I envision that these are more likely, because they're smaller units, they're more likely to be a single-person households, and so you're probably going to have one vehicle per unit. Whereas if this was a street like Montague or Marshall Terrace, where you have families, that, I mean, there are probably families on those two streets that have two or three cars.
I live 300 yards from the beginning of Stewart and West Main. And I can't see that many cars just going in that one street without a turn lane.
At what, in what timeframe? I mean, because you're talking about all day.
Well, that's true.
If you talk about, if you talk about, say, everybody comes in and goes out twice a day, you're talking about 160 vehicles, and you divide that by eight hours, I mean, that's, that's, that's 20 vehicles an hour. And so that's one every three minutes.
My bottom line point.
Three minutes is a really long time.
My bottom line point is, I saw a little bit of city council, and everybody that I heard on city council wanted an exit on the backside. Is that a no-brainer for you? I mean?
Well, I think I've explained you.
I understand that.
That, that's basically a deal killer. You know, at this point right now, I don't want to.
It's a deal killer because these people that own this property have upped the price, and you can't afford it. You don't want to pay it, right?
Right. It is not economically feasible to buy that property to continue this.
If you start building, do you think those, the owners of those properties might say, hey, he's building, and we don't want this property anymore? And they might lower the price.
I cannot speak for those.
I understand that. But if you build. But you were saying, excuse me, you were saying, if you built, you didn't want to put the building in the middle of the road, because the road could be open later if something did change.
To me, and I know this is, this is a long attention with some of the folks, to me, the traffic impact of a project of this size is minimal. I know that Mr. Shanks was, was, you know, concerned that this intersection, it's a bad intersection. And I think maybe there was some misunderstanding, that I wasn't saying that it wasn't a bad intersection. I was just saying that if in fact it is a bad intersection, the impact that this project would have on it would be minimal. If it's a bad intersection, it's still a bad intersection. I'm going to tell you that I've been down Stewart Street probably at least a half dozen times in the last week and a half. I've never had any difficulty getting in or out. I mean, I've approached from the east, I've approached from the west, I've approached, come straight across from the ramp, coming up from, from Central Boulevard. And I have, I mean, I just don't see where there is an issue. Like I, like I mentioned, I think at council meeting, I mean, I live out in Fox Hollis Farms, and we have, I think, close to 80 large, single-family homes in our neighborhood. There's one street in and out. So in essence, that is a dead-end street. I live in the first house, going into Fox Hollis Farms. So I get to see the traffic, and I'm going to tell you, there is no traffic. I mean, if a car can, if one car can turn every minute, a minute's a long time. The average stoplight is only about 30 seconds. And so if a car can turn once every minute, that's a whole lot of traffic that you're talking about, that an intersection like this can accommodate. You know, the, to me, it would really be ironic if they would say that this intersection needs a traffic light, because I have an office on Deer Run Road, which is off Piney Fox Road, which is a very, very heavily-traveled road. At one point, we had over 200 people working down that road. And they all came in at 8:00, and they all left at 5:00 in the afternoon. And they did study after study after study after study, and they said, no, you don't have anywhere near the traffic, near the traffic light. I just, I just think that that's a non-issue. I know that that's a hard thing for some people to appreciate, but I don't know if you all, I mean, you know, there was a recent report done by Mr. Boogie about the Danville housing market. And at that meeting, we had some council members there who raised the issue of traffic. And says, well, what do we deal with all the traffic that all this new housing that you're saying we need is going to do? He says, traffic's a good thing. We don't have traffic in Danville. You know, I mean, I was in, I was up in DC weekend for last, and it took an hour and 45 minutes to go 19 miles. That's traffic. It's not, you're not going to be able to create situations where there is perfect flow of traffic. And if you're trying to, you know, deny this project because you want perfect traffic flow, then I would say you're making a mistake.
Yes, Mr. Gell.
Just, in front of each of you is the traffic counts that we were asked to do on Central Boulevard and West Main Street. We did a tube count on the ramp across. There's also the tube counts on Stewart Street. And then there's the VDOT annual counts from 2002 to 2013 on that stretch of West Main Street. There's also additional copies here at the podium, if anyone wanted to see the outcome of the traffic studies. If you want to come up and grab one, I'm sorry. Stewart Street, you can see, the average daily volume on Stewart Street was 164 cars. The average day on the ramp across from Stewart Street was 1,646 cars. West Main, the traffic back in 2002 was approximately 11,000 vehicles a day. In 2013, it was down to 8,300 vehicles a day. So West Main's actually dropped about 25% the number of vehicles traveling up and down West Main Street. I can't tell you, you know, what the comparison was between, because we did the tube count across the street. But Stewart Street itself is only bringing 160, 170 cars a day coming out of it now.
Is this the traffic study that was done? I, I may have misunderstood, but it seemed like at the last meeting, I asked about traffic, and a report, and I think Kent Shelton was here, but I thought I heard you say that the traffic study said it was not a problem. Am I, am I wrong?
No, there was a study that was done, actually by VDOT, when this project first came up, and that was in your last Planning Commission packet. I'm sorry, I didn't reproduce copies today, because you already had it. What, at the council meeting, they asked questions on the actual, you know, if that study was still accurate. So the city took and put tube counters out there to see if the numbers still matched what the VDOT numbers were. And the numbers are, it's still accurate, what the study, the VDOT study was. The VDOT study said there's not an issue with Stewart Street. There is an issue with the ramp across from it. Its level of service is deficient, but that's not because of this project. That's just an existing condition. Now, again, the number of vehicles on West Main Street is continually, appears to be continually going down. There was a slight anomaly where it went up from 2011 to 2013. But in general, the amount of vehicles on West Main Street has gone down, which makes it, in effect, easier to get out of that ramp from West Main, across from West Main Street, either direction or out on Stewart Street, so.
One block up from that ramp is Westmoreland Court?
Yes. Yes.
Not that far from the ramp. It's a one-in, one-out, there are six apartment buildings, there are seven houses, and there's the La George, which I think a lot of, we keep comparing, you know, this project to the La George. Now, that sounds like more traffic coming in and out of there than this project. Is that, I mean, have you looked down that street? I'm not sure, it's a lot of older apartments, so there may be less cars, but, I mean, there is-
Yeah, and there's also a, geez, what's the, there's another apartment complex down there, my dad drew the plans for them. They were built back in the sixties. Three stories. Uh, no, uh, shoot.
Lady Astor.
Lady Astor, I'm a Lady Astor, the Astor Arms.
That's another block up, that's another block up.
That's, that's sort of the same situation there, I mean, that, those, that's, I think that's, I guess that's, I guess that's twenty-four units, because they are, they're three-story buildings with four units on each floor, so yeah, that, that's, that's twenty-four units right there in that complex, that basically come out, like, say, one-
They've got another exit, though.
But they always have to come out on West Main Street.
But, but not Westmoreland. Westmoreland is, is six apartments, I don't know how many in each apart, certainly more than four, or six in each one, I would think, and then La George, I don't know how many units that is.
And there are, and there are some large apartment buildings right there on West Main Street as well, that you actually enter from the rear, so they would be coming out there too. Like I say, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sound like, you know, that, that I'm insensitive, or, or, you know, callous to other people's concerns, but that's not a lot of traffic. I mean, I, I live it every day, and it's, 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 you know, three cars, three cars a minute is not a lot of traffic. And so, if you've got three cars a minute, you're talking about a hundred and eighty cars in an hour, and that's a whole lot more than what we would see in this type of project.
Alright, let's-
May I ask one more question?
Okay.
Has there been any consideration to splitting the apartment buildings and putting one on one side of the cul-de-sac and one on another side of the cul-de-sac? And that way, or either moving the street and have your right turn at the top?
There are, there are, there are utilities that currently run down the street right-of-way, and so, we need to maintain the right-of-way where it is. You know, separating the apartment buildings on either side of the street, that means we gotta have two parking lots. And so, and it's not so much, I mean, we still have things, have the same amount of parking lots, but when you have one parking lot that has, let's say, in excess of twenty spaces, if somebody has a parking, and they need all twenty spaces, you don't want twenty, you don't want ten spaces on one side of the road and ten spaces on the other. It's, it's good for the parking, it all together, it's more convenient, so I would say that that, that would be, I mean, it's doable, I mean, like I say, that, but there's, but this plan was, was, I mean, it was thought out before it was brought to you, and so, a lot of issues were considered, that, and this, this was deemed to be the best option.
Okay. Back, just back to the traffic real quick, if the light were to go there, the stoplights were to go there, who would be responsible? I mean, it's not his project necessarily creating the problem, and I guess the traffic is coming off Central Boulevard, but, I mean, is that a split cost, or is that a negotiable item? But, I mean, but the study's saying we don't need it, so I mean, I guess it's-
Right now, the studies show that there's an issue with the ramp, which is not the developer's problem, but doesn't meet the warrants for the installation to signal, that's not been triggered yet. Whose cost would it be? That's a, a good question. If it's shown that it's not meeting it now, you know, then it would probably be the city's cost. If the additional traffic that's generated from this would trigger that, then that would be a negotiable item. At this point, a light's not even considered, because it doesn't meet the thresholds to install a light, so we haven't got that far.
So, if the project was finished, and traffic became an issue, it could be negotiated at that time?
We would look at that prior to finishing the project.
Okay.
Man, I would like, when I, there are, there are a lot of developments around the city that, basically, whether it's coming out of a public street, or whether it's coming out of a parking lot, that generate at least as much traffic, if not more. There's a project out on three sixty, the housing development that's just been built out there, they didn't require a traffic light on, on three sixty out there. There are all sorts of apartment complexes around Danville that have a whole lot more than forty-two units, and they, they certainly don't require any type of traffic lights. I don't, I don't see where, again-
There are certain criteria that are required through Virginia Department of Transportation before you can install a light. It has to meet certain thresholds, number of vehicles, accidents, speed, and, and other things. At this point, this intersection hasn't met the thresholds for the installation of one of them, so. As you said, Deer Run Road, if anyone's familiar with that, it hasn't met the warrants either for the installation of one. Would it, in the future? You never know. You know, like I said, right now, traffic on West Main has dropped twenty-five percent. Could something change in the future? We hope so. You know, we hope that the Dan River Mill complex develops into, into something wonderful and, and draws all that traffic back, but at this point, I can't say. I cannot say that, yes, this is gonna need it.
Any other questions for Mr. Dyer? Okay, thank you. And I want to open the floor for some other people to speak. Go ahead.
I'll be real brief, my name's David Fuquay, and I own the property on both sides of Stewart Street there, West Main, two fifteen and two thirty-one, and I've just got two observations to make. In all the conversations that I've heard, there be, there seems to be some concern about it, about a cul-de-sac, so, about increasing traffic on Montague. So, is there any way that they could keep Stewart Street open? Number two, observation I made, past the two fifteen West Main Street property on Stewart Street, Mr. Walton owns both sides of Stewart Street, just about all the way to the back of Stewart Street, and you know Stewart Street is not much of a street. Could Stewart Street go to the west? And, because the other thing I've heard about is people don't want the apartment on the right side of Stewart Street, or on the west side, so if they could move this Stewart Street to the west and build the apartment building down there on the side next to Central Boulevard, you know, that may prevent the apartment and the cars and the noise from being backed upside on the side next to Montague. So, that, that would be my question, if you could move Stewart Street to the right, give them more property on the left, and maybe build the, the apartment building there next to Central Boulevard.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
I've got a question for him.
Okay.
Did you have any funerals between January fifth and January eleventh?
Did I what?
Did you have a funeral operating out of your facility, January fifth to the eleventh, this past week?
Probably so.
Okay, I, I was just trying to match it up with my numbers to see how it accounted for it, and I didn't, I, I couldn't see anything in the paper, but I, I wanted to talk to you, but I got the data too late this morning to give you a call, so.
The best I can pick up on traffic coming down, you know, is really not that much traffic coming down Stewart Street.
Okay.
You know, depends on if we're busy, that's gonna increase tra, traffic. It's not the kind of traffic that has been coming through, cutting to Watson Street, like it was when we did have some houses back on Stewart Street, and we had a lot of flow, and when Modern Professional Pharmacy was there on Watson.
Okay.
We had a lot of traffic.
Our counter was below your drive entrance, so I didn't know if, if you had any impact on the numbers that were here, that was all, okay?
I couldn't tell you right off, but I think, you know, we've been busy, so we probably could have.
Okay. Thanks, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Fuquay.
My name's Keith Walton, I'm the developer. I just had a, one little paragraph, we actually, two or three paragraphs to read out of the study that we, that the city paid for. So, anyway, first of all, it says, "Wake-up call. Great progress has been made since begin, since, since the bottom began falling out of the Danville economy in the mid-nineties. Downtown today is polished bright and with additional changes, quite well positioned to meet some of the demands of its current and next generation of renters and homebuyers. There are housing customers who, once living downtown in greater numbers, will be able to anchor an increasingly competitive Danville as a vibrant city on the move. The River District strengths historic warehouses, an attractive riverwalk, a state-of-the-art why, downtown architecture, and an adjacent, an adjacent historic district are all evidence of thoughtful economic development, planning, and execution. For this, Danville is most to be proud." And now, this is what they're saying needs to happen in Danville, this is the survey we paid a hundred thousand dollars, whatever it was, for to, for them to tell us what to do. Okay? But these gains, significant as they are, are at serious risk of plateauing. The residential blocks between Avery and the Medical Center, which is where Stewart Street is, between the Medical Center and the River District, and between Avery and the Community College, like a critical mass of success. Additional housing supply in these areas, especially between DRMC and the River District, is essential in capturing the housing aspirations of hospital downtown business, River District business, and other employees who want a rich urban living experience. And if housing is not soon complemented with a richly textured package of retail amenities, bike lanes, and other upgrades, the upwardly mobile employees that Danville needs, employees that Danville needs, will be that much harder to retain, never mind attract. So, what they're saying is, if we don't get some housing in the city besides what we've got, it's hard, it's hard to attract young professionals. More of it, more even than in filling around the River District with exciting new supply and retail amenities, the glut of thousands of unimproved brick, ranch-style homes throughout the city is so pervasive that when the time comes for young professionals who are pivotal to the city's success, to have families, it will show decreasing interest in staying in Danville unless their move-up options improve. These are a survey of pre-nineteen thirties wood residences, residences without any but imputed value to existing residents require attention. In short, the data is clear. Additional economic gains for Danville will not happen if serious attention is not given to the matter of Danville's weak housing market." So, it, going down a little further, "Economic development sometimes is and sometimes is not explicitly a set of housing tasks. The conventional and appropriate way to think about economic development is part business development, part labor force development, and part commercial and industrial real estate development. But in the case of Danville, severe oversupply coupled with a fierce nature of competition for knowledgeable workers means that Danville's continued recovery will hit significant walls if these and related housing issues are not addressed, and addressed now." That's what they say, that's not what I say, that's what they say. You know, and, and the other thing that I say about this is, you know, as far as, as far as the apartment going to the end of the cul-de-sac, you know, I really would be fine with that, it costs a little more, you know. You know, the cul-de-sac's important, you can't, Mr. Wilson was saying, you know, you go down there, maybe if we start doing this, they'll start doing something better on the other end of the street. Well, this is a big investment, we can't roll the dice and hope that if we build something nice, that the people at the other end of the street can tear their things down and build something. This is a major investment, you've got a, you've got a, you've got to stop somewhere, because if you get to the end of Montague Street, then you got those blighted office buildings, doctors' buildings, you go up Watson Street, and you take a right and a left, and you got the lower end of Montague Street, you know, the same thing is happening down there. So, you gotta stop somewhere, that's, that's what, that's, that's the way I see it. And, and the other thing is, you know, I'm willing to work with everybody here, you know, we worried about a signal light, we worried about this, worried about that, I think the city should be saying, "You know what, let's work together and try to get something going in Danville, Virginia, to attract young professionals, to attract industry." I mean, industry looks at this, they come in here, you know, everybody's, "I'm not moving there, there's nowhere to live." You know, there's, there's a couple of good, not a couple, there's a lot of good houses, but people live in them, a lot of them, you can't wait for somebody to, to move, to, to go in there. So, the way I look at it is, why can't the city and our, and our project work together to try to make this happen? I mean, who cares about the stoplight? I mean, I don't, if it's Central Boulevard, it's probably coming off of there, you know, why are they worried about me paying for the stoplight? And, and, so that, that's how I see it, and that's just being straight up with everybody here. I'm willing to work with anybody here, but it's really, you know, Danville's population has gone from fifty-five thousand, I think, to about forty-five thousand now, there's no industry coming here, young people can't move here, there's so many problems around this town, you know, step it up, let's all get together and make it happen, and not fight over a signal light or traffic, it's, I just think we're looking at, think the whole, totally the wrong way.
Okay. Some other people wanna come up?
I'm Lewis Dumont, I live up the corner of two forty-nine West Main Street. I really came here just to get some clarity on the issues. Number one, and I don't know who to ask these questions to, was this ever about Section Eight? This project, or can I ask you what you said?
No, actually, no, that's Section Eight, but one thing that, we said, one thing, Lewis, the other thing for me to understand about this project, is we tore down all those houses down there, if they want to leave it like this, we can just put some more houses down there, kind of sort of like, or there, we have to have no approval, we don't like to do anything, go down, can't give this guy a damn, any good permission for money, basically. Is that correct, Ken?
A couple days longer than Monday, but within reason, yes.
It's a good thing, I'm glad everybody's not totally looking at the, you know, the whole picture, what's trying to happen here.
I guess, number two, was there ever gonna be a three-story office building?
Alright, so that takes care of that.
I was told I was gonna lose my parking, right there in front of my house on West Main and Montague, is that?
No, I mean-
I, that's, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite catch that question clearly.
I was told I was gonna lose my parking in front of West Main and Montague, right there at my house, on the corner, next to the Callahands, that's what I was told.
Uh, but, well-
And I'm just trying to get clarity.
A question was raised at one point, would that have an impact on site distance coming in and out of that interchange? If we remove parking? We haven't found that it's necessary. I can't guarantee in the future, again, as things change, if the volume on West Main would go up substantially, but based on what we know from this project, the numbers that are coming in and out, and what we've seen so far, it's not necessary to remove that.
Now, I heard about a street light on Stewart, I mean, I just couldn't make sense of that. So, going north, there's a light at the hospital, and going south, there's a light at the university. That's two lights within one mile to Swice Goods. There's no light on Montague, there's no light on Westmoreland, there's no light on Canterbury and Randolph, which has the high school there with twenty-five hundred students.
There used to be.
Didn't there used to be a light there?
Okay, but the point is, there is not one there now, okay? There's no light on Virginia, there's no light on college, there's not one at West Hampton, there's not even one at Hawthorne, so it's, it, a, a turning lane, well, I think we've sort of talked about that, but again, there's no turning lanes on all these other streets, so, which have more houses, more units, so this just really didn't make any sense to me. Now, I also heard that, that, you know, this has always been single-family housing, so I decided to check, I'm assuming. So, I, I went down Stewart, Stewart's got three oh nine with four apartments, ABCD has four apartments, and I guess Fuquay, Mr. Fuquay's here, and his house has got two apartments right there, two twenty-nine, two thirty-one, so that's ten multifamily units on that street. If you go down Montague, man, there is, well, I, I can list them all, but let me cut to the chase, there's twenty-two multifamily units. Two nineteen, two twenty-one, four and four, one twenty-two to one twenty-four, one thirty-five, one thirty-three, one forty-eight duplex, then the house at the end of the street's got four units, Thomas has got four. Then I went on, so really, where I live, one block this way on Stewart, and one block this way on Mar, on Marshall Terrace, then across the street, I was just seeing what the real story was. Mount Vernon, Marshall Terrace, two seventy-one, four units, anyway, I'll just give you the darn, that's got thirty-eight family units. Westmoreland Court, of course, that came up earlier, it's one thirty-four at the complex, one twenty-six has got, no, that's seventeen at one thirty-four, one twenty-six has twelve units, then the apartments right across the street that Echo used to own is twelve, one sixteen's got four, one nineteen's got four, La George's got twelve, so that's a total of sixty-one on that street. So, one block of my house, there's a hundred and thirty-one multifamily units, okay? Now, and I'm not gonna include West Main or Swice Goods, because that's another thirty-three. Now, the traffic down Montague, now, I agree, you know, I mean, there is traffic, but the traffic has nothing to do with Walton's project. Matter of fact, I won't mention the name, but there was a resident down there, he missed a turn on Saturday night at eleven o'clock, he rode, he rode my rock wall and hit my porch. You know, but guess what? That's not Walton's fault. Actually, I wish all the, and, and, and all the other streets that have speedy, every one of these- of these streets I've mentioned. You know, if we could blame Walden, we could, we could take care of the speeding problem right away. But he's not, you know, that's not the cause of speeding. Every street in Danville has speeding. Now, I'd be glad to work with anybody on Montague to address the speeding issue, which is really a separate issue. I'll, I'll tackle that with everything I got. Because our kids are all important to us. I mean, really, family, whatever. You know, I mean, all of us would give our life for our kids, so that's not an issue. I'd stop right now and work on speeding. But I'm not going to go to Walden about it, because it's not, he's not the issue. Now, of course, this was, this was a city council, but, you know, it was brought up why, why people didn't stand up and support the Walden project. You know, I'll be honest with you, I thought this whole thing was a no-brainer, and I didn't think twice about it. And, and you gotta be careful, too, when people stand up for a project. I mean, I was, I was president of the Historical Society. If we ever had a, a, a project or an issue in front of the City Council, I got on the phone, called a bunch of the City Council, I mean, Historical Society members. I told them I need them. They said, "Look, I'm not that familiar with the project." They go, "Look," and I said, "I don't care, I want a body." So, you know. Now, at the last meeting, it was mentioned that there was a better idea for Stewart Street project. I have to admit, they said, that, that single-family homes has been very successful elsewhere. And that is true. But that was ten years ago. Has anybody fact-checked this? You know, that trend, ten years ago, is on the decline. Times have changed, it's not an upcoming trend. Single-family trend matched out in 2006, and now it's only thirty-six percent of those levels, and multifamily housing trend is now a hundred and five percent what it was in 2006. And the trend is continuing. Multifamily housing is booming. Now, there's a lot of studies, you could do the democratic shift from single-family to multifamily, I can list them all. I mean, the reason's sort of obvious, you know, it's aging population, downsizing, empty nesters, inability to maintain single-family houses, easier to manage, multifamily, utility bills are less because of shared, you know, shared walls, and the flexibility to be able to leave a place and not worry about some of the maintenance issues. So micro, even micro apartments is an upcoming trend, and I want to go into a lot of examples. Although I, I did talk to the president of our company that sold his million-dollar mansion, and I asked him, "Why was he buying a townhouse?" And he said, "Because he wants the ability to leave for a weekend, a week, a month, or five months, and not worry about it." Now, there was something else mentioned, there was too much space, too much building for the space. So I decided, I mean, I was listening, so I decided to look at my house, I've got a four thousand square foot house, you know, three stories, and from my foundation to the boundary is six foot. If you enclose the, if you look at the overhang at my stairway with all the stained glass, it's three foot to the boundary. Then I decided to go on the Callahan side. The Callahan side has less than eight feet from my house to the line, and Callahands have five feet. And I actually checked some other houses on West Main, right there on that block near Stewart, and one of the houses is three foot from the house to the property line. So I, I guess, I'm, so a lot of the houses are large for the lots. So my take is, so what Walden is doing is, if anything, it's probably more in line with codes and what's going, you know, what currently exists all around. Now, there is one negative issue on his project. And I'll bring it up for, see, with, with Crack Street being gone, Gunshot Alley being gone, Keith putting millions into that property down that darn street, guess what? The property values are gonna go up. That means our taxes are gonna go up. Now, you know, if you want to sell your house, then if your property values go up, that's probably a good thing. If you're one of the people that owns up to this one hundred and thirty-three multifamily units, you probably wouldn't want that. Can't have it both ways, though, you know? I think all of us want our property values to go up. All of us want, all of us want better housing around us. So, look, I want to thank you very much.
Anybody got any questions, ma'am? Okay. Anyone else wish to come and speak?
I'm Melanie Vaughn at 235 West Main. I was really looking forward to coming here this evening, thinking this would be like a roundtable discussion here to, you know, we all want what's best for Danville, we're all here because we've invested ourselves and our money here in Danville. We want this area to be developed, but I thought that the original plan was what has been put back to this group and to have for this evening for us to discuss, because that was not the best plan, or was determined that perhaps that was not the best plan. So, you know, I'm, I'm listening to what everybody's saying, I certainly, you know, appreciate what Keith is trying to do and will do for, you know, for Stewart Street, and I've read all the articles also about what's needed in Danville. But, you know, Dave Fuquay brought up a, a great point. I mean, there's not really a defined street there. There are no curbs and those other things. It would be, I think, ideal for people on Montague and people on West Main, if the apartments, you know, if this is going forward, you know, if this zoning will be approved, to have them work it out so they could be on Central Boulevard, which would not then, it wouldn't affect the water drainage issue on, that's been so much talked about, and it wouldn't disturb all the people living on Montague and the people on West Main as far as having an apartment complex in their backyard. And I think, I just wanted to address one thing that, that Louis mentioned about the single-family units and how that's going. Those complexes are going down. What was mentioned was possibly a fifty-five and older retirement community, which are going gangbusters all over the country. But that was just, you know, a little point there. But, so I, you know, I'm just saying, you know, we are, the whole idea is for us to work here together, not as adversaries, but as neighbors and community members who care about the city and want things to be good. So, you know, I firmly believe there can be a plan, I mean, you have a Plan Two there that we've been told now is not the best plan, but it is an option. So maybe Plan Three could be the option of building apartments on Central Boulevard, which would, I think, make a lot of people, community members, maybe, I don't know about how difficult it would be to do that, but certainly I think people on Montague and West Main and concerned with the water issue would make them happy, and it would allow room for the cul-de-sac to be opened again at some point, if that were to be determined. Regarding the traffic light, my husband and I think if we really need something, perhaps we could just start out with a stop sign, you know, which is really inexpensive, and a stop sign on West Main going toward downtown, and a stop sign on West Main coming back. There's already one on Stewart, and there's already one on the ramp. And that could be, you know, maybe that would work. And so we don't have to talk about the cost of a stoplight and the necessity of that. And if there'd be a turning lane, and if, if that would be the case, then would street parking be lost because of that turning lane? All of those are really big issues, where maybe a stop sign would do the trick. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question.
One more, okay.
Just, you, this is a chance for everyone to talk about what you would like to see. So I got from you that you would like to see the apartments moved to the other side of the street if possible, to be on the, what would be the east side of Stewart Street, if the street could be shifted.
If it's determined that the zoning is going to happen, you know, if that's what's going to happen, then I, I think, I can't speak for people on Montague, but I think this is, they would feel, and there's Montague representative here, then the apartments are not in anybody's backyard.
We were hoping to have a table where we could actually sit down and look at, but in order to keep it televised, we couldn't get the system to work. You are on TV, right? So that's why it's not a table sitting down. So we've done the best we could with, so, moving the apartments, the, and a stop sign on West Main Street as opposed to a traffic signal? All right, I'm just taking notes on what everybody would like to see.
No, I'm saying, you know, that, if that ends up being an issue, which some people have said, "Yes, it would be," some people have said, "Wouldn't," I don't know. I mean, I have no clue whether it would really be an issue or not, but a start to fix that issue, if it is, would it be a stop sign, just a stop sign?
Okay. All right.
Captain Vaughn, 235 West Main Street, she's my better half. And about a month or so ago, Keith had come by the house and had showed us another set of plans, which were different from the original plans that went to the planning commission originally and approved, and, and was sent back to you all by the City Council. It showed the apartment building moved down to the right near the cul-de-sac, and I don't know if that's your Plan B you guys have now.
It is, yeah, that's what we have.
Okay, so that's, that would of course make us happier at 235 West Main Street, since we're a historic district, and it's not in our backyard, twenty feet away from our backyard fence. That makes us happier. However, the best, I think, is Central Boulevard, if that could be done as well, mirroring basically what David Fuquay had said as well. And so that was, and the cul-de-sac, does it, has it happened where the cul-de-sac has been closed off and then opened up again? How do, how does that happen? If you have homes around it, but you cut through somebody's home with it?
Well, it would have to be laid out in such a way that it would, it would allow that.
Yeah. Because I think the cul-de-sac issue definitely has to be resolved, for sure, you know, for this, and I, no one's really talked at all about the construction materials of these buildings. Is, I'm sure the apartment building is brick. Are the single-family homes and the patio homes gonna be brick as well? Are they gonna be vinyl? Are they gonna be, I mean, we don't know anything about the actual structure.
Well, if my understanding on that is correct, we're right now dealing with zoning issues, and that the actual building designs and things will come back to us again, is that correct?
The subdivision plate, not the building designs.
Okay.
Okay? And the applicant can answer that question, they can also proffer as part of the rezoning, what materials or something else that would be used to build the building. At this point, they haven't proffered anything, there, there's not a code requirement that a building meets certain standards. This is not a historic district, it is outside of the historic district. While their homes are within it, this property is not. So that's why we don't have any special requirements. As long as they meet the Uniform Statewide Building Code, whatever materials are, that they put on there is acceptable, unless the applicant actually states, "I will build this building out of Material A or Material B." I don't have that at this point.
And just to, a ditto of my wife, go ahead.
It's my understanding that what goes in there is gonna be a whole lot better than what was there.
Oh, I agree. Yes, that will definitely be the case. But I also ditto the fact that the stop sign would seem to be unreasonable. That could probably be done by Monday if you had to.
Okay. In order to call a stop sign, it has to be a certain criteria, as well, and it doesn't, so.
Let me ask a question. When, when Mr. Walden came before, the primary issue for the Vaughn was the closeness of that side building, the apartment. There's, there's basically, if you look at it, there's like five with two of, four of them have a connecting piece in between, but then there was an independent one sitting on its own. That one was the one that was closest to your property.
Right, twenty-seven.
And that is the, in Plan B, which Mr. Walden has said that it's not their preferred, but it is one that would be considered.
We hadn't seen that, it hadn't been given to us.
Well, it's the one you've got right there.
Well, I don't know if that's the one, because Keith gave me this.
No, that is the same one that we have right here.
The original one, there were two buildings.
Right, we have that one as well.
The original one.
Okay. My point is, for the Vaughn family in particular, your primary issue was the proximity of that apartment building to your property, the last time we met. By moving the whole unit down to the other end, if I heard Mr. Walden write a minute ago, he said that even though it may be greater expense, and there may be some water-related issues, it's something that he would consider. Would that be acceptable to your family, that, we're not talking about others, at this point, your family on that end? We know you want it across the street, on the other side, we hear that, but at this stage of the game, for you all, the Vaughns, moving it down to that end, would that be a better plan?
For us, it would be.
Yeah, that's what I said originally.
Except I have to say that we are community-minded people, so in the big picture for our community, our surrounding area, that's not the ideal thing. For the Vaughns, for the people on West Main Street, yes, it would be.
Okay. And, and just so that, I mean, maybe it's my professional, who I am professionally, but, I mean, I do think that part of the reason we're back here, we do have the challenge as a, as a planning commission, because the City Council sent it back to us, we do have the challenge of thinking in community-minded ways. But I just want to remind, there's lots, and I'm not revealing anything about how I feel about the project, but there's lots of community issues here. There's your local neighborhood, and your particular house, and your neighbors, and it's important. But then there's also the issue from the housing report that we just got, that tells us that we need, for the betterment of our overall community, things like this just around the hospital area. And, and so I do think that we're gonna try to weigh these multi-issues to find a particular placement, and what really appears to me, the only real issue we're talking about here is the apartment complex, and not necessarily the other units. So, you know, we're gonna try to find out a way that best suits all parties involved, and it's as a community whole benefit.
Right, that's why we were, we were at the last meetings against any multifamily rezoning period. But now we are, realize that this is something that should happen.
Okay, so we're boiling this down more and more to kind of like how we place an apartment building on this particular street. Because I have, of all the discussions, I really haven't heard yet anybody raise serious issue about the single-family or the, the townhouses. And so, so, all right.
That's really all.
The, the other thing about, you know, that we're in historic district, and looking at the big picture, you know, what's, the development on Stewart Street hopefully will not be the only development of its kind in Danville. Hopefully, this will be the start of, of a lot more within the city limits. But I think it is important to recognize historic districts and that, you know, to set precedents that might make a future development with, that's totally within a historic district, and maybe there are all different guidelines, and Mr. Gilli would know those answers, not I, but to have apartment buildings with, you know, have that there. We just, I think this is setting the tone for what hopefully will be, you know, a boom of this type in Danville. It's just setting the tone, it's.
Yes, we, yes, do it right.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'd like, I'd like to ask the developer and/or Mr. Dyer, either, whichever one can answer. If you would address the issue of the street where it is, and it's a city street, it's not your street, I understand, but the thought process of moving the street, if that's even an op, an option, and even if you did, would there even ever be enough to put the apartments on the side of Central Boulevard?
This would make everybody happy, I would, I, I could have the thing right down in the middle of this, it's kind of like La George, you go all the way to the end of the street, bam, it's right there, it's the apartment building, there's not gonna be any future through-street there. But that way, it's, it can be more closer to Central Boulevard, it's not down in the hole where the, where the, you know, the water runs to and all that. So, I'm not opposed to that. Like I said, I want to work with everybody. Like I said, I want to work with everybody here. You know, we can't do everything everybody wants to do, but, but, you know, the cul, the cul-de-sac is, it's got to be, there's got to be a cul-de-sac there. But, but I could have it sitting right, kind of, right in the middle there. And, and it's actually before the jog and the road, so, where the cul-de-sac is. So it's not a, an issue there with that, I don't think. Gus, Gus is more familiar with those types of things than I am. But I, but I would say it wouldn't be a problem for me to put the, put the apartment building right, right down at the end of the street, run right into it. It's kind of a focal point, it's going to be, you know, we don't, we don't have all our drawings yet, just because all that stuff costs money. Every, every time I move that building on that street, they'd send me a bill for $700, $100. So, so I could go move it to the other side, but I'd rather just tell you, we put it right there. And then go there and do that. But, you know, it's, it's good stuff. Like I said, we just want to work with the city, we'd like for the city to work with us.
So, so what I'm hearing here then is, you guys are flexible on the, the, the exact placement of that apartment unit down there toward that curve around the cul-de-sac. You're, you're willing to discuss that in relation to community needs.
Correct.
Right, and, and, okay. I, I just think that's a really important point, because I do think, moving the street, I don't know, is that?
No, it's not.
That's a very, Mr. Gilli, I mean, I think you probably know more about.
It is a designated, it is a dedicated street, and there are utilities down that street. And so when you start talking about relocating utilities, you talk about a whole lot of money that's probably going to kill this project.
To answer that question, not to cut you off, but, and our city engineer apologizes, he's got the flu, so he's not here this evening, so. The street, it's built with, as he said, there's utility lines, water, gas, sewer, everything in the middle of that street. It's also got a base there, you've got electric lines. The costs to move that street would be substantial, even to shift it over, you know, a number of feet. Now, to move it over far enough to try to squeeze the apartments on the Central Boulevard side, you're basically going to lose everything that's under it now, and it's going to be shifted. Then even if you can salvage the sewage lines and everything else that's under, what is that base now? Those lines will no longer be in the base of the street. They'll be shifted over and into a yard. Then you've got to maintain easements and everything else on it. So moving the street over, it is possible, probably, engineering-wise. Cost, it's, it's going to be a killer because all that stuff's going to end up having to be new. Right now, we've got existing utilities that the city paid for already that can be reused. So not saying we're for or against it, just I want you to be aware that that is, there is a cost associated with that movement.
But if you put it right at the end of the street there, you can shift it one way or the other. It's not going to affect the utilities that much, correct? If you just.
I'm just talking about moving the street. The apartment unit itself is not, I'm just saying, shifting that street over, the cost associated with moving that street, they're, they're going to be substantial now. So, yes. Now, putting the apartment building, if, if that meets the community need, it is possible. You're going to shift numbers of units around, probably some of the single-family will go away. Some of the either attached or single-family would have to go. The cul-de-sac would have to be moved around. He's going to be writing a check to his engineer, which is up to him on. Could it be placed there? Yes. You know, if that's what the community decides on, that's, that's fine. The necessity for a future through-street, that was a question that was brought up from city council during the, the process. We're not seeing really the need for the through-street. The numbers don't show that by cul-de-sacking that it's going to cause a substantial detriment in the immediate area. The traffic study, the VDOT, I found your VDOT study that you mentioned, which was part of your packet, and also the numbers that we ran recently on Stewart Street don't show that this is going to create an issue. But that's, that's why we're here now, is to discuss all those issues.
So, we, the street needs to stay like it is, and you're willing to move that end unit?
I'd say if it's very end, you can kind of shift it.
It needs to be improved, not necessarily stayed. In the location, general location, yes.
That's an option.
Well, and the other thing I think that needs to be stated, just for the record and for all the people that have concern is, however the street is done, it will be curb and gutter, correct?
Yes.
And it will have proper drainage, so that's not what will be an issue.
That's not going to be.
It's not going to be an issue at all. You're going to have better drainage and that, with this project than you do now.
Right.
Because it's, it's required by law.
Absolutely. And again, I just would like to reiterate, because I think that there may be some folks here who probably would not like to see the apartment complex moved to the end of the street. It's, it's, you know, it might benefit the Vaughns, but it's going to negatively impact perhaps other people. And so, given that criteria, I think that you should make the most logical choice. And the most logical choice is for the apartments to stay where they are located.
Maybe those other people could speak.
If they would like to get up and speak, then they, they can do so.
Okay.
One follow-up, and not to you, to Ken. The utilities that are there now, are, are they going to be able to handle the load if all of this comes in?
We believe so. They handle a single-family development with a similar number of houses. The additional volume from the 20-some to the 40-some isn't enough, we believe, to, to cause problems with the capacity. We've got, as far as I know, we've got good pressures and everything else there. So we believe, based on what we know now, that yes, it's going to be able to handle it. You know, we could get in there and find that something's completely bad that we don't know about. But right now, based on all the information I have, it's okay.
I'm Jack Garrett, I live at 217 Montague, and I've addressed you previously, so I won't belabor the obvious. But if you move the apartment complex, it will be directly behind my home. I would prefer, if at all possible, to have it on the Central Boulevard side. I remain very concerned about the cul-de-sac. I understand from what Mr. Walden has said that that's a deal killer. But traffic is very much a problem on Montague Street. And this will exacerbate that problem, because you will have even more traffic cutting through since you're eliminating one thoroughfare to 86. And I've mentioned that previously about the number of children on the street and the problem we have with speeding. But my major concern here is with the apartments. And I would hope that he would be willing to somehow relocate them on the Central Boulevard side.
I don't think they'll fit on that side of the street.
I understand, I understand.
And what, why do you think that there will be more traffic down Montague if?
Well, it's already used as a cut-through street, Stewart is.
Well, I understand, but I mean.
You'll, you'll have the apartment residents, you'll have the apartment residents who will loop around and cut down Montague to get to 86.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, there's no way to know that, I guess. Okay, all right, but anyway, any, any other?
No, but it's, oh, traffic is an issue, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else out there wish to make a comment or speak on it? Yes, come on up, please.
My name is Anne Silves, I live on Holbrook Avenue.
You shake the microphone, I can't hear you very good.
Anne, my name is Anne Silves, I live on Holbrook Avenue. I just have one comment about a cul-de-sac. When I first heard that they were going to put a cul-de-sac on the street, it didn't make any sense to me because it's a city street, and when you live in the city, you have all, a grid of streets. And in my mind, cul-de-sac is for the suburbs or people, you know, out of the city. So I'm just kind of surprised and concerned that they would put, consider putting a cul-de-sac on a city street. And it doesn't seem like there's a good point. Doesn't seem like they've substantiated their reasoning to the point that I understand, anyway. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question for Mr. Walden.
Are you bored?
I have a question for Mr. Walden.
Okay.
Either the first or the second drawing, this right here, this property right here. Well, let's look at the second.
If you would take a look and then go back to the mic, so we can get you.
So you've got the apartments right here in the parking lot. Can you not flip?
Right, just right here, and then you shift it that way. But there's, there's no room there, but straight right there.
So you, you would be willing to do that? And then that would get it apartments basically out of everyone's backyard?
Get it out of everybody's backyard, you'd just be looking at it going down the street. It would, it would kind of be like the Georges, you know, it's at the very end of that street. Not quite, but it'd be kind of like that. And, you know, it's, and I can, I could explain the need for the cul-de-sac again if I need to, but I mean, that's, that's, that's what it is.
But there's definitely no room right here.
No, it's not wide enough.
If you put apartment here and apartment here, come up and move some of these over here, that's not doable.
I think it's not wide enough there. The, the land is not wide enough to accommodate the parking.
When you have the building size, setbacks, parking lots, and all of that, it all adds up to a lot of land use.
If you were, Keith, can you come, let me look at this. If you were to take, if you were to, let's say, make some kind of move to down in this area, would you pick up a couple more of these back this way? Because I noticed on the original plans, you went from five, four.
You picked a few up there if you did that, I think. Maybe, maybe just two. So you picked up two here and there.
Right, okay. Yeah, I, I just wonder if, okay, that's, that's helpful.
Is that it?
Any other questions for Mr. Walden while he's here? Did you have anything, Ken, was you just trying to?
I do have a question. At the city council meeting, when it was December 16th, when it was sent back, there were questions raised, again, about the location of multifamily apartments, which we've been working on, discussion on spot zoning, I think we've kind of covered some of that. Question on buffering, which we haven't really addressed. We've talked about traffic, layouts. Are you willing to actually, if we can proffer a layout, say this is what it will be laid out? Okay?
Yeah.
And the architectural periods, the question was raised by the Vaughns, how it's going to look in comparison to historic district. There's two schools of that. Now, Ms. Burton and I talked about this. There's one that says you're compatible, you know, similar to what's there, or you do something that's different so that people know, you know, this is a historic district, this is not. Is there a preference? And what is the materials that you're planning on using? Will you condition it upon, hey, I'll build these buildings out of such-and-such? If you'll offer that as part of it? And then if you do, is, is what you're proposing something that, you know, the neighbors are looking for? I don't know. Which school you're leaning towards? Do you want it to look like what's there? Or do you want it just to be completely different so that people know, hey, this isn't part of my district? I don't know what your plans were, I don't know what their, their plans were, so hopefully we could.
You know, we've got some ideas about what we want it to look like. We don't have everything finalized yet, but it's, we do plan to have a nice, it's, it's going to be nice.
Okay.
I mean, but, yeah, I don't know how to tell you that. I could, I could show you a picture in a magazine and say, we want it to look like this or something.
Will we be able to have some architectural rendering and say, this is what we're in, put that as?
After we get the zoning straight, we can go in there and, you know, do elevation.
If we have that as, if we go through as part of the rezoning, I think that will help a lot too. And maybe address some of that.
That's just kind of asking to spend a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, it costs a lot of money to do that, it's, it's.
Um, I mean, if it's all going to be brick, it's going to be vinyl, that kind of thing, even if you say that.
I don't think it's going to be, I don't, I don't think there's going to be any vinyl in it.
Okay.
Not that there's anything wrong with vinyl.
It's not going to be.
But if you have and say, you know, it's going to be these materials, I'm not asking for an actual, it's going to look like this, but at least that list, so we know that it's not going to be some sort of.
Right.
I don't know, ice system or something else.
You keep forgetting that, you keep forgetting that if we don't do this, I can put vinyl down there all day long.
I'm not forgetting that at all. I'm just, I know that these are some of the concerns that were raised at council, I'm trying to address.
And I understand, and hopefully I've, I've let everybody know that I'm willing to work with them, but, you know, I just, I hope it works out, I really do.
I think if you can, when it goes, I guess it'll come back to us and then back to city council again. But I think if you, even if you don't have any drawings, if you can get some pictures of some similar buildings that you, that might help. A picture's worth a thousand words, and it may, it may have plan in people's minds, what it will sort of look like. And I think that'll go a long ways and.
Okay, yeah, we, we can do that.
Yeah, I really think, you know.
Can we get some direction as to what you would like?
Well, I mean.
Once again, you presented two options, and I think, yeah, do you want something very elaborate?
Come up to the mic, but go.
I know that Mr. Walden has made contact with a native architect down in Mississippi that's doing a lot of work down there. His stuff, I won't call it avant-garde, but it's very, very contemporary, very modern. You know, is that a preference over something that mimics something that it's not, which is a historic building, or what?
I mean, I don't know if it's our job to tell you that.
I don't want to be back here again in February, and I don't want to be back here in March. And so if you can basically tell us what, what you would like. And I guess there's probably a difference of opinion right here on the board.
I think we ought to start with what your plan is.
Yeah, and I do, I think, I think what I want is what you're.
I, I think you, what I hear you saying is the quality that you want to make and the, the price range that you want to build in.
Right.
It's going to be very nice.
It's going to be market-driven, and you're not going to get top rent for something that's not top-quality.
Right, yeah.
And so, that, that's a given. I mean, as I think I mentioned maybe at council, I don't know whether I mentioned it at the planning commission, because of the fact that new construction is running $120 to $135 a square foot, by definition in Danville, it's going to be upscale, because it's going to be costing twice as much with any other existing real estate in Danville is, is worth. And so it has to be, it has to be upscale.
Right.
And so you.
Did you have a question, Mr. Walden?
I, I just think something that Vaughn said, I think is really critical here as we come to trying to come to a consensus here. And that is that, you know, whatever, whatever we come in with here, you know, if the design, if we get to see pictures, if we get to see things like that, it just is going to help us be able to make some idea, even if it's of another neighborhood or, or something like that. I don't think we need to get into telling you how you want to design things. My daughter lives in Dilworth's area of Charlotte, and, you know, there was a very old neighborhood, but they have placed fantastic, modern structures within that, both apartments, single-family, all these different kind of things. And when you drive through it, it's clearly. So I think whatever we do, if we set the standard, it does help us set a precedent for things to come. So maybe all this struggle around this particular project is actually good for us as an overall city, because now we're getting a picture of how, if we get to do it again, we'll already have an idea of a standard that we want to set. So, yeah, I think that always helps us, anytime we have any kind, even if it's a picture out of a magazine, if it's close, you know, it kind of helps us a little bit with imagining what's there. And I think it helps neighbors as well.
I think he's actually got some illustrations with him. I mean, I have to say that he showed me what he was, I was very impressed. I'm not, and I, I go and look at a lot of architecture, I mean, that's sort of my deal. And I've, I've been all over the country, and I, I was, I was impressed that there was someone here.
That would be a good question. Keith's going to do that. This could be another example. Yeah, and there's five or six of those.
Yeah, and anything that's even close to something like this generally helps us, because, I mean, we're really problem solvers here. We're trying to find consensus and make a decision, so, you know.
If you could show, show the neighbors, I mean, it may not hurt to give them an idea.
Can I have one more comment?
Sure.
Again, this may be cost prohibitive, but if it was, the apartment building was put on Central Boulevard, is it possible to put the parking underneath, street level, and have, then the apartments on top of it? I'm, I, that may be cost prohibitive, I don't know, building. I mean, that, that, that would solve both those issues, you know? The space limitations, is put them underneath the building?
I think the whole problem with putting the apartments on Central Boulevard is the space between the street and the Central Boulevard right-of-way is not deep enough to make that fit. And it's too cost prohibitive with utilities and everything to move the street over. So it's pretty much got to be, the apartments have got to be on this side or down at the end of the street. And I think he was saying he's willing to proffer that to get it down at the end of the street.
One of the other issues is whether there are requirements as far as the lot size and the number of units. And I don't actually think that there's actually enough land on the entire east side of Central Boulevard of Stewart Street that would accommodate 24 years. Again, that would be something that you all should address if you would vote to.
But I mean, okay. But there are guidelines and codes, and that's, when he brought those here, that's, they would already looked at all that.
Now, I, I thought when we were talking, when Gus was talking earlier, he said that there's a lot of water runoff on Stewart.
a lot of water runoff on Stewart Avenue now, and it just continues to run off, because there's no curb and gutter. Are there sewers down there running underneath it now?
There's not storm sewer, there's sanitary sewer, so that...
Okay.
You've got water lines and sanitary sewer, electric, gas, but not anything stormwater catching yet.
I was gonna say, you know, a backhoe, somebody could go and take up Stewart Street in two days. You know, just the street itself, and I don't know how expensive it would be to, like you say, move the utility line, maybe 50 feet one-way, with those shorter?
Lines aren't, those older lines aren't easy to pick up and move, you're gonna end up just reconstructing it all. So then you're, you know, every linear foot of new line is costing you X number of dollars, not counting installation, and so if you can reuse what's there, it saves the city a lot of money.
Okay, just throwing up other options.
Alright, thank you, sir. One other, you are considering a one-car garage with your duplexes?
Actually, they have two cars.
Two-car garage.
That was one of the big things that I've got in mind, as everyone's...
Okay.
So actually, there's four parking spots per unit, because there were too many garages and too many ground.
Okay.
One more question. If you move the parking, the apartment building to the end of the cul-de-sac, are you willing to consider the parking lot in the back of it? Or on the side towards Central Boulevard versus in the front?
Oh, that's probably, anywhere we get parking, it would still be a factor, given your concerns in the state sort of project, I'm sure you'd be the one that most expect to place any other one as possible.
Okay. Any other people wishing to speak on this project? We're gonna call it, bring it to a close here. Anybody else wish to speak? Any other questions from commissioners at this point on this issue? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing on that. And I was gonna ask you if you want to discuss this, this other issue about the, and does that need to be public hearing?
It does need to be public hearing, no. It's, at the last meeting, planning commission asked staff to investigate the amount of time that items have to be reviewed. We just tried to spell out, and I believe Ms. Burton has a calendar that she's given to everyone, showing by the time we get applications in, when the ads have to go, when we have to notify neighbors, that it's very difficult for us to, to change the amount of time, because we're already quite pressed now. If anything, if we do it, we could, and we, there's a provision for major and minor subdivisions, we thought about doing major and minor developments, based on the number of lots or something else. It's gonna increase the amount of time necessary for review. So we're just, we're putting it out there. If you want us to look at actually changing the code and establishing something like that, we can. This was more just information, if you asked for it, here's, here's how it works.
Okay. One thought I had, and y'all can chime in, and what you're thinking. I think it's really important for most projects that we keep things on the fast track and streamline it through. That's the first point. But on the second point, I kinda like what you said on making big projects little projects, just like this is, is an example. If we could have, kinda like city council does, maybe a work session and then a meeting to kinda get more facts and pictures and ideas about the bigger projects, I mean, I think that's, that's worthy to be considered. I know Mr. Wilson probably would like that. One other thing, Mr. Gilstrap's here from city council, and I thought it was a great idea that you sent it back to us, so we could get more input and the community could get together, and I thought it worked out well. Thank you for that.
Mr. Shanks was here too.
I know he was, and then he left.
Okay, just wanted you to know.
Okay. So, do...
Yeah, I would, I would echo what you're saying. A major project, something like this, you know, I just imagine how this process might have been a little bit different had we had some things to examine and think about with a little bit more time.
And this may, you know, having it this way, sometimes it's difficult, or for whatever reason, for the developer and the people to get together and talk. This, this does almost force the issue in a sense, it does bring it all together where you have a venue and a way to talk about it. So I think we could consider that on the bigger projects.
Okay. If it's something you want, we can look at refining it further and actually work on codifying it. It won't be back by February, just because we gotta go in and establish, but we'll look at trying to bring it back, March, April timeframe, for maybe some actual work on it, so...
Let me ask a question about just procedural. Oftentimes in committees, and I don't know how it is with city committees and government committees, but oftentimes, a chair has a lot of power in being able to determine whether a project is a major or a minor, or we need to have a review on it or not, rather than trying to figure that out from time to time. What would be the possibility of something like that, between you going like to our chair and that person helping make a determination, boy, we probably need to do a work session on this, or something like that?
That's possible, that's some of the things we'll look at.
From case-to-case basis, rather than just...
We prefer if there are some harder and fast rules, just because, an engineer designer coming in, looking at a code, saying to the staff, well, I need to meet with you and direct the chairman, and then you guys decide which route I have to take. At least if it's in the code and they haven't spoken to any of us, they can say, well, based on this, I think it's gonna be this, they start designing that way, then they contact